Called this regular meeting of council to order November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, here at Stafford County Annex. Are there any additions to the agenda besides a ten-minute executive session?
I need to discuss CMB under me, please. I guess I don't really have to add that then, do I? Or under new business?
You want to put that under new business?
Yeah.
CMB?
Yeah, CMB, yes.
And like I said, we have a ten-minute executive session for police, a non-elected personnel issue. Are there any other additions to the agenda? All in favor, raise your hand? Got it, motion carries. Okay, there being no citizens here to make comment, move to consent agenda, approved minutes, regular council meeting, November third, two thousand and twenty.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand?
Yes. Got it.
Good. Motion carries. Appropriation ordinance, eleven seventeen, two thousand and twenty, in the amount of nineteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-three cents. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Sorry. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, moving on. Department heads, electrical department. Jeff?
The only thing that I have is that, I told you, I think it was at last meeting, that we'd been having some compressor problems down at the power plant, and we'd taken, which would be the newest compressor that we've had since the mid-eighties, to Wichita to have it repaired. They didn't get it repaired, so we were running on the standby compressor that we had. It's an old V-style compressor, it's been in there since the sixties. And, you know, up until the other day, we hadn't had any problems with it. I mean, we ran it, like, monthly for a little while, just to make sure that we had a backup if we needed one. Well, the other morning, we came in, and all the fuses were blown on the compressor, so Jason and I put new fuses in, we kicked it on, and it wasn't ten seconds, and we think a rod come through it. Didn't make it outside, but you could tell that something broke inside of it. So, I called S and S in Wichita, and I said, "I kind of got a problem. I've got to have air," and I said, "Do you have my other compressor done?" And they said, "No, we're in the middle of tearing it down." And I said, "Well, I've got to have air, and I need it today." I said, "This is an emergency, and we can't do without it." So they put me together a remanufactured compressor that's the same style, and the same, probably at one time, the same vintage as the newest compressor we have. It's an upright, that has a large piston in it, and it's what they call a three fifty Quincy, and the one we have is a three seventy, so it would just would have been the size smaller, just a few CFM a minute less capacity than the one we have. So they put it together, I went to Wichita, picked it up, they had it set, mounted, and ready to go on our base, and our motor, and that stuff. So we put it in, but I asked the guy before I left, I said, "I'd like to know what this costs, because if we update this other compressor, I'd want to bring it to the council and see if they'd be interested." And I think the sheet that I gave Jamie was forty-seven ninety-five, is that right?
Forty-seven ninety-five, yes.
Which is a completely factory rebuilt compressor, the same style, has a six-month warranty on it, and so at this point, this is what we're running on in the plant. So I guess my thing to you would be, if the council would be interested in purchasing this, and using it for a backup, when our other compressor gets done. Providing is that they can repair it, which he thought they could, but we don't know what the cost is yet. If you go down there, they got a room as big as this, and it's just full of compressors they're working on all the time, so I don't expect to see it anytime real soon. I think if I push him, I can get it done a little sooner, but at this point, this is where we're at, so. I guess I would ask the council if they would be interested in purchasing this, and then we'll just move it to a backup, because if that other one gets repaired, and it's repairable, we're still going to have to buy a motor big enough to run it anyway. It's the same size as the one I have, basically, and the older compressor was, like I say, a V-style, and it was half the size, it ran on half the size of a motor. So regardless, we'll have to buy an electric motor for whatever we do, but it runs like a top, I mean, it runs like a brand-new one, so, anyway, I guess that's where I'm at.
We've got to have one.
Yeah, I don't think it'd be a bad idea to have one on standby.
We're getting by with what we have right now, but this is the backup, is what you're saying, basically.
No, this is what we're using. My backup went down.
So you're using one from the gate?
Yes. We picked it up, they had it mounted and ready to go, same rotation, everything, we slid it in, and it's on our base, and our motor. But the old one ran on a seven and a half, this one runs on a fifteen. So, but it's an early-sixties vintage, an old V-style, I mean, we've had it forever. And it's been a good old compressor, but I, he kind of talked like they probably wouldn't repair it, if they could even get parts for it, you know, because it is close to sixty years old. But if we get the other one rebuilt, I would hope that they could rebuild the other one for half, you know, what that cost, and then we'll have probably, I don't know what a motor costs, but it's going to be a thousand dollars, fifteen hundred dollars, I really don't know. So we'll be into two of them for six or seven thousand, which...
East side, Kyle, do you have any questions?
I can't hear anything.
Can you hear it?
Like, if somebody's gonna, I think I heard you just fine, Mark, but I don't know if the guys out back, maybe if I can get closer to the computer, because I can't hear anything.
Okay.
Did you guys both see the email that I had sent over this afternoon about the compressor?
Oh, yeah.
The backup, the backup that we had failed a week ago. It's an old vintage V-style compressor, been in the plant since the early-sixties, and we think it broke a rod, and it didn't come through the side, it hammered really, really hard. They think it's an old Worthington-style compressor, which they can't get parts for anymore. They said they'd be glad to look at it, but they probably, they thought the best thing to do would be to rebuild the one that I took down. But in the place of it, they sent, they put a new remanufactured compressor on our base, which is the same style as the compressor we're having rebuilt. They said for forty-seven ninety-five, we could buy that reconditioned one with a six-month guarantee. And it runs, it's brand-new, I mean, basically, it's been sent back to the factory and completely redone, so that's kind of where I'm at, and waiting on the cost of what it's going to take to repair the newest compressor, the one that I took down there first, so that's kind of where I'm at.
Got it.
So, anyway. But we got to have air to run, I mean, we can't start an engine without it, so we're down to just one, just the one that they put on there for me, and I brought back, so that's where I'm at. So...
Sounds like we can't deal with that. I don't really have an option.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to purchase the compressor for four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars from S and S.
Second. Okay, motion's been made to purchase the compressor for four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand?
Yes.
Got it.
Motion carries. All right, Jeff?
Then I'll get back with you when I have the price on what it takes to repair that other one, which I hope by next meeting, but I'm not going to hold my breath, so. Other than that, just regular day-to-day stuff, you know, we're still working on that line out west, and some stuff here in town, too, so it's just regular, everyday work, I mean, nothing exciting, so.
Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Jeff? Okay, moving on, water department. Jason?
Nothing on the water or wastewater?
Nothing?
Nope.
Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Jason? Moving on, okay, street park.
The only thing I was going to ask about was the truck parking, and how far we want to go with that, and what we want to do, and all that.
We'll talk about that tomorrow, we don't need to talk about that tonight.
That's easy.
It's mode, and that's what we needed to do right now, so, that's done.
Jamie? Want to let them know what Jason had said right now?
He asked about the truck parking lot, and since he's been gone, I will, and I can talk about that tomorrow, and where we're at, and what we're doing.
Is it, Jamie, is there any citizens there?
No.
No?
It sounds like shit, it really does. I think I'm just going to get off, because I can't hear anything.
But you are on TV.
Okay.
Well, I'll get off, because I really can't hear anything. I'm not really much help, so.
Okay.
I might go ahead and log off here.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
I do want to point out, on the street and park department, Jason actually called and texted me on Sunday, and Monday morning, they were out cleaning the leaves out of the square, and getting all the, cleaned up the leaves, and getting all the Christmas stuff out without me having to prior, really even ask, and I don't know if you guys know this or not, but Christmas decorations are not the favorite of the city projects, and they did it without even me having to remind them, let alone get on their high end about them. So, just had to share that little positive note.
Okay.
Looks good, really good.
Okay, there's no more questions, comments, or concerns, move on to police department. Chief?
Just a couple things. One, you know, we're coming in on the year-end, I think we've been doing really well up there at the PD, I think we've done a lot. Tori, we got promoted to sergeant. Dustin graduated the academy October thirtieth, so we're back full staff, everything's going well. We did get fifteen hundred dollars from the state, so we ordered some equipment, we got it free for the clickety-tickle ticket of just patrolling, they gave us fifteen hundred dollars free, so we got some stopsticks, some measuring tapes, some safety lights, and different things like that, free charge. Next year, we'll get two thousand dollars for doing it, for this Thanksgiving and all. I graduate command school this week, and then December fourth, I'll graduate CPM school. The only other thing I have, I'd like to ask the council, because it's over my spending limit, is thirteen hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty cents. This is piggybacking off of the fire department to get two radios, chargers, and the, get them programmed. We don't have any spare radios, so Dave, our part-timer, thank goodness he has a sheriff's department radio, so he uses that, and Dustin, or Preston, is on the fire department, so he uses his fire department radio. If we had anything else, or radio down, we don't have any spare radios, all we have is what me, Tori, and Dustin have, we have three for three of us. I'd like to get two, this would be for two radios, chargers, and everything, and that way we have a spare, because if Dave leaves, or Preston leaves, or somebody does, then we don't have a radio for a part-timer to use.
Do you want to use this fifteen hundred dollars for...
No, no, that fifteen hundred's already spent. We have the money in our budget, in our radio line item, to get these, but the fire department is ordering eight or ten of them, so we got a cheaper price if we can go in and get two of them when they order theirs. Instead of them getting six, they get eight, and we get it, are two-cheaper.
That was thirteen ninety-two thirty?
Yeah, thirteen ninety-two thirty is what Marshall got me for the quote.
Okay. Council? Do you have that money in your budget?
Yes. Yeah, we're still sitting, like I talked with council before, like to roll over twenty-five, thirty.
Kyle, can you roll that? He's asking for permission for radios, I think for thirteen...
Thirteen ninety-two thirty.
Ninety-two thirty. That'll be extra radios to keep on hand, because they don't have any extra.
It will be for the officers' portable handheld radios, we don't have any extras upstairs, all we have is what we have. And our two part-timers are using their personal ones from other departments, so we don't have any spare radios if one goes down, or anything like that. So this is piggybacking off of the fire department, it's going to buy a set of them, and we can get them cheaper if we go in with them and buy on their set, so that we get more for a bigger discount. On those radios. Does that make sense?
I can't hear anyone but Mark.
Okay.
Somebody correct me if I'm wrong, okay, I'm going to make mistakes on this, but basically, they just want to get two more radios with two chargers for thirteen ninety-two thirty, and this is going to go in on the fire department, they're going to be purchasing some radios, am I correct?
The county.
The county will be purchasing radios on this, so it's going to be kind of a better discount for the police department, and it's within their budget to purchase them right now. Okay. All right.
Because we're still talking, like, for our budget, you know, we had talked about before about rolling some extra money over into the equipment reserve fund, but even if we can tap out at thirty thousand into our equipment reserve, we're still sitting it over, we're still sitting close to thirty thousand dollars that we are under budget for this year, so we have plenty of money to get some, to do the stuff that we need to get done, still turn money in. I mean, we really watched our spending this year, did really well, so.
Okay, council?
I'm opposed to it if he's got any budget.
Somebody want to make a motion on this?
Make a motion to buy two radios, two chargers, programmed for one thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty cents, come out of the budget.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, raise your hand?
I'm not going to vote, I didn't hear enough of it.
Okay. Okay, motion carries.
Just so you know, I can approve stuff like that.
Okay. Well, I just got the bill tonight, we didn't know how much it was going to cost until this morning, so.
Okay, have I got any questions, comments, or concerns for chief? Okay, moving on, do we hear anything from Chief Sanders?
We need to talk about vacation.
Oh.
What did we leave it as last meeting?
It was kind of up in the air, and I think you wanted full counsel, wasn't it, didn't you want full counsel here?
Wasn't that saying, I was...
Maybe, maybe refresh Ross on how much you can carry over, and how much, how much maybe...
So you can carry over forty, you can carry over five days, forty hours. When we implemented handbook, I think it was in two thousand and eighteen, we had put that, and then, because it was kind of late in the year, and they had nineteen to get it used, and then two thousand and twenty was fresh start, this is what it is. We paid Jeff out because he was so high, and there was no way he was going to be able to take all of that. So basically, right now, Alan is asking if they can either get it carried over, or we can just pay him out and be done with it.
Good thing, because you have more than five days.
Yeah, Dustin has, Dustin has it one day he can use, or whatever, you know, unless you want to do a blanket. Think Tori, I don't have my sheets with me, Tori has, I think, eight, and I have twelve, I think, days that I have to use.
Can we just pay them out?
And we have the money in our salary line item to pay that out this time.
Would you guys rather have it paid out, or carry it over?
I would just rather pay it out, be done, start over, you know, every department.
Right.
You know, be a lot simpler. Than train it on, lose track over the years, obviously it can be manipulated, but...
So, do you want me to pay everyone out across the board this year?
Yeah.
Or do you want just the police department to carry it over?
I think you just make it all...
Or paid out, I'm sorry.
I mean, I think, just make it the same across board, the way there's no confusion.
It's up to you guys.
Yeah, it's on me, yeah. I'm fine with that.
Kyle, I assume you didn't hear any of that?
No, I don't, I don't have a preference either way, I mean, it's better to pay it out, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
You can't hear me either?
No, I can't hear you either, Jamie.
Wow.
So, I might just get off, like, I don't want to waste everyone's time.
That's fine. Yeah, we have three.
That's fine. Sorry about that, Kyle.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you, have a good one. Okay, all right, did someone make a motion?
Do we need to have a motion?
I'd make a motion to pay everybody out of their vacation time.
Have a motion and a second on the table, any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand? Motion carries. Okay. No more business under police department?
Is that something we need to look at the handbook, and decide whether we need to change it, leave it the same, you know what I mean? I mean, that way, they just know you're, what's...
And I think there's, I think there might be a few other things in there that we might need to look at, too, so I can, I can add that on to my extra pile, and...
On your ticket.
And go through it, and then, it was you and Marshall...
Dakota.
And Dakota, so, I mean, maybe you three could, I could make changes, and send them, just send them to you guys, and you can review, and, or have a, get together, and look at it again. I mean...
Yeah, yeah, whatever, it's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Sometimes just make adjustments, I guess.
Yeah, that's what it's for.
Okay. All right, moving on, everything from the fire department, from Chief Sanders. No? Okay. All right, Jamie, what do you got?
So, Thursday, I graduated from clerk school, pretty excited about that.
Congratulations.
I don't think I have much else. I do have a question about the Dillons building, though. Tori and I were brainstorming this morning, is that building, like, if someone came along, you would sell it, or if someone came along with a good plan, you could, we could keep it as a city building?
I would say if someone came along with a good plan, I would entertain selling it.
What about with a good plan and keeping it?
I don't know.
Like renting it, or like letting someone do something?
Just be part of the city itself.
Just kind of be part of the city.
But Jamie, I know where you're going, because me and Tori talked today about it, because I know it was my idea that I brought on, on some stuff. We'll sit down this week and talk, because I kind of had some ideas on that, that I don't, I don't want it to turn into like a range, so I want to sit down and visit, because I think it's a good idea, so let's sit down and visit.
Well, I'll go with it, because that's just part of the public, so...
Right, I know, but I, there's some concerns and everything, so, I'd like to sit down with you, because I think we could have a good plan.
So, basically, he was talking about being able to get some equipment, and we were talking about trying to make it into a building where we could maybe have a little bit of a gym, and then also have a place where people could rent out for gatherings, because there's not that many places that people can rent out for gatherings. And it, like, not being, like, totally remodeled, but...
Make it presentable.
Make it, make it good, yeah. Not any, like, and not, not be like a city-funded thing, like, it would, but it wouldn't, like, we would, we would look at trying to do some fundraising, and different community grants, and things like that, but I just...
My office is, I was trying to work with...
If you guys want to help yourself, the building?
My office can get a gym for city employees, PD, to work out, and I could get us free gym equipment, my old department is going to be getting some new gym equipment, they may donate some to us, I've got some lines on some fitness centers out of Wichita and all, that we may be able to get some gym, just to promote a little bit for city crews, what I was looking at, was for city employees, was just generating a little bit of helping us, and having a gym that we could, we could work out in. You know, nothing huge, you know, it's not going to be a Gold's Gym, but if we can get a bench, and we can get a few little things where city employees can, can get in better shape, it's going to save us on insurance, save us on injuries, you know, us officers need to be in better shape, and I think it'd just be, it was good. We had a gym down there in the old department, I went down there today to get some ammo, and they've got a bunch of equipment, they just get donated for free, or they buy dirt cheap from a, from a gym when they recycle them. So, that was kind of what I just wanted to try and put in the next year, a plan, to try and get us something for, for city employees to, to help, help, health benefit-wise, of being able to work out, and get in better shape. You know, even if it's somebody that goes in there and gets on a stair stepper for a little while, you know, thirty minutes a day, you know, may, may be a benefit to the city.
I'm open for suggestions and ideas, I guess.
Put something together.
Unless you just want to sell it, and I can list it on Facebook, because we got the loader pretty quick. Surely someone wants to come in and...
I can tell you right now, there's not a ton of people looking at purchasing buildings, let alone anything in St. John right now.
Well, put something together, and see what, see what you can brainstorm, I mean...
I will just mention that I think maybe the rec department is putting in a weightlifting fitness big area over here.
A big area?
Yeah, figured what they have. Maybe, but whether that's open to...
Right.
Everybody, membership, I don't know, just...
See, and that was like, for the city of Stafford, they pay for other city employees for their gym over in Stafford. Thing is, like, for us, the guys, you know, if it's your hour lunch break, and you want to go in and work out, I'd like the guys to be able to take their vest and their gun belt off, and it be secured, they can work out for their hour lunch break, and then go back to work. You know, you can't go into a normal gym and just take your gun belt off and light in the corner, and go hop on a weight machine, but that was just kind of our thought process we were looking at, is just, you know, just trying to build the city more, and, and help out the city crew and staff.
So, we'll report back, because it sounds like all of Tori and I's great ideas. Someone doesn't like. I am smiling.
All right. Okay, anybody got any questions, comments, or concerns for Jamie? Okay, what do we got from John?
Nothing.
Nothing, all right. Anybody got any questions, comments, or concerns to pass on to John? All right, moving on to old business, is there anything on old business we'd like to discuss this evening?
The five twenty-eight east first garage is down. All, the four houses that we have, for sure, ready to go, the Fourth Street one over here at four oh one, there's minimal property, the two on First Street, minimal property. I keep getting the runaround for the one on the north side, with the companies that are supposedly involved, and it's just been really weird, actually, but, um, what was it, what's the other one?
Fifth Street, maybe? No, let's see.
Oh, Bob Toots. His is packed full of stuff, so that creates a problem. I talked to his daughter, he is now ignoring all of my, like, he's never gotten, he won't take any piece of mail that the city sends him, and then, I believe he got a heads-up from someone when we're, I've been trying to serve him personally, and now he's just refusing to open the door, so, he knows about it. His daughter called, and, you know, I just told her, and like, "We're not trying to throw away your guys' property, we just want to see stuff cleaned up," and, you know, I told her that we're working on several different houses, and she had a few plans that she was going to try to get in place, and I know someone else was talking about purchasing it, and helping get it cleaned up, along with the car wash, but I'm not sure where any of that is, but that's been the latest on that, he still hasn't been served personally, because he's refusing to open his doors, so. And then the two, can I still, I can still talk about donations in regular, because, because that's... So the eight oh eight North Exchange, and the six fifty one, I still haven't seen anything signed from them. The Fifth Street one, I know had, I think that he said he had COVID, or was quarantined or something, and then, I'm running into a problem with eight oh eight North Exchange, because that house isn't exactly on the... exactly on the corner. It appears like it should be like a lot in, or a parcel in, but it's actually listed as the whole thing. And when I sent him the paperwork, he called back and said he only wants to donate the house and he wants the lot to the south of that, but it's all one parcel, so. When John's more available, I'll try to look into seeing if we have options or what's gonna happen on that.
He wants to break up that, he wants, it's all listed.
Well, see, I think he actually bought the lot after he had owned the house. The house is still standing, I don't think he bought both of them together. I think it was an after deal.
So then they buy them?
Because see, there used to be a house, a two-story house on the corner that the fire department, or that, and then that house there to the north of it.
So then if it was two parts, if he didn't, or is it, how does that work?
Well, when you buy it, they just put it all on one tract, on one, you can combine it.
So.
So it's all in the same deed now?
Right, it's all on one deed now.
So, yeah, it's gonna be more of a battle to figure that out, so that's some of the stuff I'm working on for that. Then for the old loader, I got a $20,000 offer. Um, I don't think I had permission to sell it, so I told him we had to wait to come here. I know I had several phone calls, but he's been the only one that has offered what we were asking. So, I don't know if you guys are good with that. I'm gonna type up, if you are okay with it, I'm gonna type up a bill of sale and, uh, make sure it releases all liability, no warranty, and that they're in charge of picking it up, which I think he's coming tomorrow morning if you guys sell it, so.
Why don't we get right here, we're asking for it.
Yeah.
Can't complain about it, so.
It's twice what they offered us for trading.
Well, I maybe have a motion for that, just, can you say?
Just to cover.
I'd make a motion to sell the old loader for $20,000.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
And then the truck parking, um, it's mode. We're gonna be waiting on Chad to get started on the dirt work. I know he said he's kind of busy, so, I mean, between that, he, I mean, we're on the list for that and the houses, so we're just kind of waiting, waiting on him at this point.
What was, uh, Mansell said about making it a little shower and wider?
Yeah, so we, we asked for two by 30 by 105, but he was suggesting three by 24 by 105. Making the, making it just a little bit wider and not as deep.
And, and he just told me he thought it'd be more stable.
Yeah.
As far as ground with it being three foot wide instead of two foot. That way, if they weren't completely centered, you know.
Makes sense.
There's a difference of, I don't know if I put it on the email, it's a difference of, uh, $1,300.
Switching it?
Hmm.
$300 more, or what'd you say?
$1,300 more.
More.
To go with three by two instead of two by three?
No, we were doing two foot by two foot.
Oh.
Two foot wide, two foot deep.
Is that right?
Two by 30 by 1.
Oh, 30.
Oh, by 30, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're adding six.
We're gonna have to.
Okay, yeah. And I'm fine with that, it's his business.
Yeah, that's what he recommends.
So I'll just add that into the spreadsheet and update that and just keep sending that out, um, as we get more, um.
The rock?
Yeah, the rock. Um, I, Ross got reminded of a, of another quarry down at Sun City and I called down there, um, they said everything that they have is $10 a ton. So I went in and I did the mileage and just showed you guys up there by, by the rock. It's all down there with different options, but the, um, the Sun City would be about $466 a load, where Harshman's is $680.25 a load. So it might be beneficial to go down to Sun City. So, but that's, that's there for when we start needing that, too.
Do they have the same size rock?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I, I think they call it, uh.
Yeah, they call it.
Oh, what'd they call it? I, I think they called it four to six, but it's not that big.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I went out and looked at a load, a guy that's got some. It's, it's very, maybe not as, uh, a little more variance, maybe, but.
Probably wouldn't be a bad thing.
No, that's right.
Might help it pack.
It's chip rock.
Yeah.
It will be, it's hard, but limestone's not that hard either and you'll get a free load, every other load, I mean, that's, that's three for two. I mean, every third load you'll gain one.
I think that's it, old business.
That's it, alright. Okay, moving on to new business. We have the CMB license.
Um, I just need approval for the CMB license for Kansas Co-op shortstop.
Some move.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
I don't, we don't need land bank, do we?
No, but I do want to point out with the CMB licenses, I know, I think it was last year we had to have like special meetings. Pam sent out a letter, they are notified, they have until the meetings. We're not calling special meetings for them to come and get licenses, so. If anyone comes to complain, just let them know that they were notified.
Okay. Alright, are we, we don't need the land bank, you said?
No.
Okay, alright. Okay, we have an executive session, 10 minutes, uh, non-elected personnel to discuss, uh, personnel issues. And I get a motion.
Some move.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, oh, yes. Who, who do we need?
Just everybody at the table and me.
Okay.
That'll be fine.
Alright. Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. We will resume at, uh, 7:47. Call this meeting back to order, having no more business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.